A few announcements, and then we'll bring the candidates up and then we'll have our moderator to begin. Couple of things, first Jamison Door has been sponsoring these forums for many years. And Dwight Clark, who is the president of Jamison Door, sends his regards. He does a fair amount of traveling. Recently, they merged with an international company. So Dwight sends his regards, and his message is always as voters to be educated. And that's part of their role in the community is make sure folks are educated about the people who represent us. So on behalf of Dwight and Jamison Door, let's give them a round of applause for their support this morning. And I think we've told the candidates, I want to make sure everyone here knows, in case you're supposed to be somewhere else. We are on Facebook Live, and so folks who are not here can watch this. They can't join us, so just want to make sure you all know that. And I'll introduce you to our moderator here in a couple of minutes. I do want to note, we have one elected official here who is not running for office this year for the Board of Ed, Lyndon Murray. Good morning, Ms. Murray. And we'll introduce the candidates for Board of Education shortly. And then I just want to make sure everyone knows the role of the chamber. Again, we do not endorse candidates for any race. Our goal, like Jamison Doors, is to educate the voters so that they know what the candidates stand for. And we focus mainly on business issues that might affect our community. We do have two of our board members in attendance. We have Dr. David Zavine, Super Ten Schools. Good morning, Dr. Zavine. And also in education, one of our board members, Dr. Jim Oliver, President of ACC. And then also related to education, we have one of our 2024 Business Award winners in attendance. We have Representative of Small Business of the Year from USMH, Dr. Jacob Aspie. Good morning, Dr. Aspie. Welcome. And I would like to take some time to do some shameless plugs for some chamber events coming up. Tomorrow morning at 7:30 at the Chamber, we have our Women's Investment Network. The topic is credit banking and wise money habits. And again, Courtney Beaver of Sky Wealth Management, she'll be presenting. It's for chamber members, but there is no charge for that. Again, at our office tomorrow morning at 7:30. Boots to Suits, we're entering our second year for this program, October 8th at the Chamber at 8 o'clock. The topics Habitat Humanities, Veterans Build, serving those who served. Speaker Melanie Watts. It is free to attend for anybody. You cannot be a veteran. If you support veterans, you're welcome to attend, and our goal is to help folks who are transitioning from military life to civilian life. I did want to bring your attention again to a real special event, the first year on your table. It talks about our apprenticeship program. We have a fundraiser November 9th. There's flyers on your table about the program, about the sponsorship, about registering for that. And again, we believe like WCPS and the apprenticeship program, we lead the state in this for many years. So this is an opportunity for us to raise some funds to help the employers pay for their apprentices. It used to be about $4,500, and then we would pay for half of that with our partnership. And now with the minimum wage going to $15, it's increased significantly. So we want to raise some money to help the employees bring on our young folks so that they can transition to a career. We want to mention we have two other forums. Next week is our City Council Forum, again, back here at 7 o'clock. And then on the 16th, the Maryland's congressional district forum will be here as well. So be looking for that, and we hope you can join us then. We do have an election guide on your table, and I think maybe they've been distributed. We asked one question of all the candidates of all the elections this year. Why should someone from the business community vote for you? And the answers are there for those who chose to answer. So if we could bring up our candidates, if you'll join us here at the front. We have Peter Bigford, Charles Burkett, Robin Merchant Spickler, Stan Stauffer, Melissa Williams, and Dr. April Zentmeyer. They'll be making their way up here. And before I bring our moderator up, I just want to thank the candidates for running for office. Those who are in office, that work for office, as we all know these days, it's not easy to be elected in the elected office. I think the Board of Education position probably works the hardest of our elected officials because of the amount of time they have to put in. It's just not their, every other week meetings, there's a lot of preparation involved. And so on behalf of the chamber, thank you for throwing your hats in the ring. We'll look forward to hearing from you with that. It's my pleasure to bring up Sorin Dourias. Sorin serves on our Governor Affairs Committee and our committee with input from our members, Tracy Lutchee. Sorin is Executive Director for Penmar Regional Association Realtors. Please help me welcome Sorin.
Thank you, Paul. All right, let's see if I can adjust this, see if I can see my face a little bit there. All right, thank you very much. Thank you to all the candidates for being here this morning. One stick housekeeping item, I was told to remind all of you, your microphones, please do not touch them during your responses. We're set up for Facebook Live, and so we want to make sure that if you don't bump or move that, they're set up. They can get the best sound possible for those who are viewing online. All right, well, again, my name is Sorin Dourias. I'm the Association Executive for the Penmar Realtors. It's my pleasure to be able to moderate this forum today. I want to start off with just a handful of reminders about the setup for today. Number one, you all will be given an opportunity to respond to questions throughout the day. Some of these are designed to be asked to every single candidate, while others have been randomly selected in advance to split up certain questions among the candidates. Everyone should be getting about an equal amount of time to speak to one another and to speak to the group. I do also want to remind the candidates that today is not a debate, and as a forum, it's an educational opportunity, a time to talk about your platform, talk about your viewpoints, and to share with those who are potential voters why they should be able to vote for you and what it is that you bring to the table. So with that being said, you will also notice if you look up front that there will be time cards. If you see the yellow time card on there, big and bold, 15 seconds remaining for your question. And your response then, if you see red, means you need to wrap it up immediately. Also, one last thing I'll say before I jump into the questions here. It may be tempting to want to respond to another question, maybe someone else was asked. I would ask, please stay on topic, stay focused on the questions asked to you. And we will not be able to give people extra time to weigh in on an issue maybe they wanted to at a different time. So without further interruption, we'll go ahead and get started here. So thank you again for all of our hand bits. I'm going to start off here. I'll be reading your last name, and that's how we'll know if it's your turn to respond to the following questions. So the first question is, please introduce yourself and let us know what motivates you to want this job? And what specific skills or experiences qualify you to be an effective school board member? First, we'll start off with Bigford.
All right, I get to go first. Good morning, I'm Peter Bigford. I'm entering, running for my third term on the Board of Education. What motivates me is that it's been, I've actually had the time of my life doing, working with this team for the past two terms. I never thought I'd run. Somebody asked me to eight years ago, and I'm glad I did. What gives me qualifications to do it? I've been surrounded by teachers my whole life. My wife's still a teacher in Frederick County. My father, at 83 years old, is still a teacher at Alfred High School in New York. So I've grown up around education. And right now, I'm excited about the next term because we are at a precipice change in Maryland with the new blueprint legislation. We're about to get a influx of millions of dollars, and we need to make sure that we spend it wisely so that we take care of the module.
Next, Burkett.
My name is Charles Burkett. You know what? You've had me say Burkett. That is not right.
Lured you right in.
Sorry about that. I'm a lifelong Washington County resident, been married for 27 years. We have four children. We have fostered over 20 children. I am an entrepreneur by nature. I built three successful businesses here in Washington County. And each one was a little different than the last. What qualifies me is I just, I come from a different, I think Peter and I are the only ones who are not teachers up here. But I have taught youth group for 20 years plus. I've, as I said, I'm an entrepreneur, so I have dealt with different budgets, varying amounts in those budgets. And just looking forward to be meeting base on the board and bring a new perspective.
Thank you. Spickler.
Good morning. My name is Robin Merchant Spickler. I'm a lifelong resident of Washington County all my life. An experienced teacher of 44 years with Washington County Public Schools, family in kindergarten. So I have lots of experience. I've been through newer superintendents and numerous curriculums. And I bring a lot of experience from all that to the board that I have not run before. I was asked two years ago to run, and I was just newly retired. So this year, I decided this is the time to do it. I'm also committed to this position with my heart, and anybody knows me, I give 100 plus to it. I'm also invested. I have three grandsons that are coming through the system. I had a wonderful experience in Washington County. I want them to continue. I see Washington County being a trendsetter, and I think this is the place to be, and I want to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stauffer.
Yes, I'm Stan Stauffer. I started teaching in 1970, 10 days after I was released from the United States Army. And I spent 42 years in the system. I taught social studies at Williamsport High School for 41 years, one year at North. I was a coach of soccer for 27 seasons, 23 varsity. I also was very active in the Teachers Association through the years. And why did I serve? For years, I taught government, and I told the students that you had to be involved. And so after I retired from teaching, I'm going to wear my hat in the political arena. And that's what I did. Why am I doing this? I have three great grandchildren coming through the system, six, four, and two. I want this system to be preserved and be an excellent system for those children and for other people's children.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
Yes, good morning. My name is Melissa Williams. I am a lifelong Washington County resident. I was educated in Washington County Public Schools, employed by Washington County Public Schools, and am now pleased to be serving on the Board of Education for Washington County. My why is simply that I believe in public education, the importance of public education. I believe in learning, and I want to continue. I've been serving almost 12 years, got pretty much tied of 12 years. And I'd like to continue serving to see the progress that they can continue to build.
Thank you. And Dr. Zentmeyer.
I'm April Zentmeyer, and I'm running for reelection because I want every student to have the same opportunities I had growing up in Washington County. Safe schools, highly qualified staff, a curriculum that prepares them with a plan and a purpose for after high school. I deviated sometime, although I'm a teacher, and that's who I am, not what I did. I'm also a nurse. I own several small businesses. And I have many, many grandchildren, and it is for them that I want to serve. I hope that we continue to have parental partnerships that support a great school system so that our kids can fulfill their purpose. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, this next set of questions that we'll go on to are under the section of roles and responsibilities of the board. Mr. Burkett, I almost got you. Please pick a challenge currently facing the school board and tell us how you will address that challenge.
I think a major issue, serving as a substitute teacher for the last two years. One thing that I saw in the school systems that I was in, I was in multiple schools across our county. Of course, not every day, but was behavior issues. I think that is a major problem in our schools, and so how do we address that? One thing I've learned by doing foster care is there has to be accountability. If you don't have accountability for the students, and they're allowed to just do whatever they want, and there's no consequences. They're going to continue to do what you're doing. We could talk about cell phones. There are cell phone signs, no cell phone signs all throughout the schools, but almost every kid is on their cellphone. And I was told I can't touch their cellphone. They sit all through class on their cellphones. That's just one of the behaviors. I've seen fights. So anyway, I think that is one of the biggest issues. It interrupts other people's lives a lot.
Thank you. Same question to Ms. Spickler here. What, if you would, just pick a challenge facing the, a current challenge facing the school board and let us know how you plan to address that challenge.
One of the challenges I see is the retention of excellent teachers in the county. We have wonderful people placed in throughout the county, and their expertise is beyond measure. And we need to find every way to retain them. Salary is one thing, but there's other issues that need to be looked at because they provide for all the students, no matter what school they're at, from pre-K up to high school. We need to find a way to increase the group of people that are staying within this group. I mean, that's all I ever wanted to do, and I stayed here. I don't see that with a lot of new teachers coming in. They're coming in, and they find out the things that are more enticing, and over the mountains they go. I would like to see us contain the wonderful teachers we have.
Thank you. Same question to Dr. Zentmeyer.
I think I would have to agree, only because I talked to so many people this past weekend, that discipline is something that we need to work on. I think even the students that I've talked to are hesitant about using lavatories. A basic need to keep hydrated so that you are on an equal playing field, both in the classroom and in athletics. As far as the cell phones, I am just truly grateful to all of the principals that have allowed me to roam their schools, and I'm not seeing cell phones. As a former assistant principal, I know that when you go, a kid gets you the cellphone. And we're just not having that problem, and it's wonderful that we're able to major on that minor next up, dress code. So I'm very glad to have the opportunity to be part of this process.
Thank you. Same question to Mr. Stauffer, if you would, a challenge currently facing the school district and how you plan to address that challenge.
Well, I would agree that discipline is a problem. It's always been a problem. In my 42 years, I have worked out many, many fights in schools, on hall duty and so forth. But you know, discipline and behavior starts in the home. The parents have to tell their kids, listen, you go to school, you got to behave. So we need help there. Funding is another issue. It's always been a battle since I've been involved in educational politics since 1970 to get funding from local funding source and even from the state, but especially from a local funding source. Recruiting and retaining teachers right now, we have one of the highest salaries in the state, but that's going to be lost in 2026 when everybody goes to $60,000. So those are a few of the issues that are challenges for us.
Next, Ms. Williams.
Yes, well, I would have to say that it would be the increasing needs of our students and the funds that we have to meet those needs, provide the supports and resources. We don't see anything in our schools that we're not seeing in our society. We have students who are coming to us who live in poverty.
Everyone can hear Paul.
To substances, and there's a number of students who are coming to us with special education needs. And this requires lots of resources. We have employees in our schools that when folks are in the room or in school, we never would have imagined. Behavior specialists, safety and security officers. The needs are there, and the supports and resources to meet them are challenges.
And Mr. Bigford.
Well, I agree with all my colleagues on the challenges they mentioned. One of the challenges that we've been able to work on that I've been... Can you hear me? One of the challenges we've been able to work on that's been actually quite gratifying is making sure every student has something to do on the Monday after graduation. With Dr. Clawber's help, we've been able to do enrollment, so students can go to HCC and go to high school and graduate even with their associate's degree, which is fantastic. I still think we need, and our apprenticeship program is the first in the state because many local businesses are actually having our students as apprentices, and then giving them jobs afterwards, which is fantastic. I would like to see this expanded. We've been working hard. I think everybody here agrees that we would like to be able to help students that are either in the military have options there. So we're trying to get an ROTC program.
Thank you so much. Before we move on to our next question, we're going to take a quick technical break to adjust the microphones just a little bit.
We're going to adjust this because we're probably here on Facebook, but it's not your fault. We can hear some of you. So Stan's got the test going, so we want to, we're going to do some testing here, so. If you don't use your teacher voice, is it going to...
That would be great. Is your microphone on on the... Yeah, we tested all of them, and they were working.
Testing, testing, one, two, three.
It's coming through, but it's light, yeah.
Sure, again, the word.
Okay, keep going. I mean, it's coming through, but it's light, and when I keep going up, it's like feeding back. Yeah, it's coming through. Okay.
I don't, I don't even hear it. Talk into it. Lean forward.
I have no idea, because they're...
Stan paid electric bills.
Like, these are cut up way higher, so if we can just project, we'll be able, because we're here and just, okay.
So we'll have to, we'll have to self-moderate. So if you, if you can hear something, like Stan is loud and does freaks and plays again. If you can't hear yourself, just speak a little louder so that in the back room you can hear you.
Paul, Paul, when I came in, they told me to speak into this mic, and I'm a rule follower.
As you are. All right. Thank you for your patience, everybody. Thank you for your help, Paul.
All right, this third question here. What role does the elected school board play in preparing students for post-high school education and/or workforce development certification? We'll start off with Mr. Stauffer, if you would, on this. Again, the question is, what role does the elected school board play in preparing students for post-high school education and/or workforce development and certification?
Well, I think what we have to do is, we have to make sure that the opportunities are there so that when students graduate, they're college and they're career-ready. And they're also ready to enter the workforce. Even before Pillar Three of the Blueprint, there were opportunities to do this in Washington County schools. We've had AP courses for years. We have IB program at North Pike Hangar Town. We have junior IB program, International Baccalaureate Program, more than no school. We have a tremendous tech high school, which has been in existence since the 1970s, where there are a lot of programs that students can take. You can get certification for various industries and so forth. So I would say, in summing it up, that what the elected school board can do is make sure that those opportunities are available for the students to make sure that they are college and career-ready and ready for the workforce.
Thank you. Same question to Mr. Burkett.
Can you read the question one more time?
You bet.
I said I wasn't going to do that, but I was talking about this microphone.
You're all good. Okay, so what role does the elected school board play in preparing students for post-high school education and/or workforce development certification?
I think next to their parents, they play the most important role. I will say that I think the current board and Dr. Zavine have a good program already going. And not being in the know, it was nice to hear this morning that they're looking into an ROTC program. As commissioner, I was able to see some different programs that were started with the college and with local businesses. And so I think that's one thing that is going really well currently and needs to be expanded upon. And like I said, it's good to hear that they're looking into an ROTC program.
Thank you. And Ms. Spickler, same question.
I feel the board needs to make sure that their students are aware what's out there through their counselors and through other avenues. I'm from a family of five. I'm the youngest, and I have the only one with a degree. All my other siblings were not college-bound, and they made more money than I did as a teacher. But I feel that the push needs to be not just scholarships or academics, but the blue collar getting into the field. I know the Boyd Michael Tech High is just a marvelous place, and then you have Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. And once again, I tag on what he said about having the next program being done for the students. But I think those programs need to be out there and really need to be explained to students because sometimes they just don't know.
Thank you. This next question is for Ms. Williams, Dr. Zentmeyer, and Mr. Bigford. The question is, providing examples, what are some of the community connections? What are some of your community connections? And how are you going to stay connected to the community, including parents, students, and businesses? And again, we'll start with Ms. Williams for that question.
How am I connected to the community? Well, I live in Smithburg, very visible. I've been on, I'm visible throughout Washington County, I believe, through various organizations through membership and by contributions and in my work group ability.
Thank you. Dr. Zentmeyer.
I have to say, before we go further, we have over 119 CTE programs that allow students to actually try on a career first. We have apprenticeships that allow our kids to actually work in the community. I know that wasn't the answer to this question, but I was so excited about that question, I had to offer that. As far as visibility in the community, I not only have what you see or forms that we have, but I'm a Smith from Smithburg. I attended South High. I won't go into our fight song, but I've served in the community as assistant principal at both Williamsport and North High, and taught at Boonsburg. So I have a pretty wide network. I also have a former student in each high school. And with so many grandchildren, I get to go to many functions throughout the community.
Thank you. Same question to Mr. Bigford.
So I'm still involved in many local organizations. One of the advantage of having a background as a news broadcaster is you get asked to MC events still to this day. Favorite part is here, we co-host the Donut Drop every day. But that keeps me in touch with a lot of local organizations. Also, I served on the Board of the Community Foundation. And I was just asked to be the liaison for the Arts Council between the board, which I don't think I've told my colleagues yet. And I serve in a leadership position at my church.
Thank you. This next question is for all candidates. Individual school board members have no authority. Only the board as a whole can make decisions for the Board of Education. What skills or traits do you possess that will allow you to contribute to the effective operations of the board as a whole? And please provide a specific example that demonstrates one of those skills or traits. We'll begin by going to Mr. Stalberg for that.
I think people who know me know that I am a, when I'm for something, I'm a strong advocate. And when I'm against something, I can be a strong opponent. I'm very transparent. I'm very blunt. I'll joke with my colleague here, I'm glad she's the president of the board because she's much more tactful than what I am. I. I take the role of being on a nonpartisan board very seriously. I do have a letter behind my name politically, but when I sit on this Board of Education, I am in a nonpartisan position. Through my eight years on the board, I think people know my stand on various issues. And once I make a stand, I do practice.
Thank you. Same question, Mr. Bigfoot. You repeated one more time. You bet. Individual school board members have no authority. Only the board as a whole can make decisions for the Board of Education. What skills or traits do you possess that will allow you to contribute to the effective operations of the board as a whole? And please provide a specific example that demonstrates one of those skills or traits.
Sure, I think one of the, people always say I should have been a diplomat because I tend to be that person in the room that's listening to both sides and then making an issue. It's one of my favorite, or making a vote on the issue, which is one of my favorite parts of the job. I mean, you know, when you get this position, they grill and you, you're powerless unless you have the majority of your board agreeing with you. So don't try to walk into any school and change the flowers, which I always thought was great advice. And, you know, I think we were tested during some serious times in my two times on the board. And I think the look of my record, I listened to both sides and I gave a reasonable decision at the end.
Same question to Ms. Williams.
Well, I'm a great listener. I think I have the ability to view issues and situations from multiple perspectives. I am happiest when I'm collaborating. I am one who seeks to build consensus. I ask lots of questions and seek to understand. And I can also be, I guess, a force to be reckoned with in terms of standing my ground when I think that. That what I'm advocating for is, is the right thing. But I'm also willing to admit when I have made a mistake and have overlooked something of importance and need to reconsider a position.
Thank you. Same question to Ms. Bigfoot.
Not being on the board, I'm going to have to go with where I am with other organizations that I am in. I've been a president of a lot of organizations that are local. I'm with the Washington County Junior Football League. I've been with them for 35 years. I'm on the board. I oversee all the cheerleaders and so a lot of decisions are made. And I listen to all the squads. I listen to all the parents, dealing with the parents and hearing concerns and then acting on them accordingly. I feel that I'm able to have a level ahead. Once again, I agree with Stan, when you have a issue or something comes up that is dear to your heart, you want to stand there for it and you want to project for it. But then you also have to be realistic. Does it fit the needs of everybody involved? And if it doesn't, then you need to back off and you need to look at it and then find a level playing ground.
Thank you. Same question to Dr. Zentmeyer.
We're really fortunate to have a board who has our students' needs first in their hearts and on the table. We're collegial, collaborative. And when we don't agree, which is seldom, we're well researched and we listen to one another. So as a team, we're able to promote kids to be who they were purposed to be.
Thank you. And Mr. Burkett.
I would kind of agree with Ms. Zentmeyer. I think everybody up here has a passion for young people or they wouldn't be up here. One of the first things that I was told after I sold all my businesses and went back to work for somebody was, I'm not looking for a yes man. And I said, well, you're not going to get that with me. I, I can be, I can fight for what I believe in, but in the end, I'm willing to come together for the better of all. And I, other people have said this, you know, you, we all probably have strong opinions on certain things. It's okay. You discuss those, you work through those, and then you need to come together and make a decision that's best for the students and the majority.
Thank you. This next question is for all the candidates. How would you ensure a positive working and working relationship between the Board of Education, county commissioners, Washington County and the Washington County Teachers Association? We'll begin with Mr. Bigford.
Well, I have to commend our superintendent, Dr. Savine. He came into his position when we hired him. We said that one of the challenges he's going to have is going and presenting before the county commissioners. And it's a county commissioner board that oftentimes black funds us. And he's done a fantastic job of building those relationships. And in the past two years, we've gotten, we've made more progress than I think we have in the past 10 years. So I think we're working on that. And it's really just communicating our needs and building those one-on-one relationships. We collaborate, we try to collaborate with the commissioners and have group meetings. For WCTA, it's a negotiation process that, but at the same time, we also have. Our, the president of the WCTA always comes to our meetings. They're part of our process and they, they kind of give us at every meeting and also communicate with us.
Thank you. Same question to Dr. Zentmeyer.
As a former member of WCTA, I know we need to listen, find out what the issues are at heart. But I have to echo what Peter has said. We're really fortunate to have a good lobbyist in Dr. Savine. And he has created a working relationship, not only within the county, but within the state. So we're very proud of those partnerships and support them. And it brings us much information to make very informed decisions.
Thank you. Same question to Mr. Burkett.
As a former commissioner for two years, I worked well with the other commissioners. We disagreed at times. It's a little different setup than the Board of Ed. But I had, I did get to meet with Dr. Savine. And I understand the makeup of how this board works. And I think it just does come down to listening and trying to come to some sort of middle ground on, on things. I forget what the rest of the question was, but.
Yeah, I'll, I'll repeat it here with your remaining time you've got. How would you ensure a positive working relationship between the Board of Education, county commissioners and the Washington County Teachers Association?
Just also one last thing would be that I think the, the back fighting, the behind the scenes fighting needs to go away. That causes a major problem within the relationships between the two boards. Between, I was just talking to Bill McIntyre about the relationship between the commissioners and the city, same thing. There was always this kind of backroom thing going on that the two just could not seem to come together. And that was very frustrating to work with.
Thank you. Same question to Mr. Stalberg.
I'll, I'll take the Teachers Association first. There's a lot of criticism sometimes from certain parties in the county about, quote, the teachers' union. It's an association, you don't have to join the county, so it's not a union in my sense of the word. But you make up the Teachers Association. The teachers, you have about 1,800 teachers. Last I saw, eighty-some percent of them belong to the association. So when you attack so-called teachers' union, you're attacking the teachers who make up that association. So, you know, they've had quite a bargaining since 1969 and, and so forth. As far as the county commissioners, I wish we could have more joint meetings. We haven't had one for a long time. And I wish we could come to the Board of Education, the division, if we look at our situation and not fall in fashion, instead of.
Thank you. Same question to Ms. Bigfoot.
Having been on the board for WCTA for numerous years, it was an experience that was well worth the knowledge of how to deal with different groups within the city. I feel that the meetings need to be frequently, not just because of it's time for our budget. I think it should be frequent meetings among all the groups so that everybody understands where they're coming from. I know we started having quarterly meetings with the superintendent back when I was on the board, which, which was very informative because we understood where they were coming from. They understood where we were coming from as far as the teachers' point. I think it's just frequently getting together, just talking, finding out where everybody is standing and not waiting to the, you know, last minute to be asking for things.
Thank you. And Ms. Williams, again, the question is ensuring, how would you ensure a positive relationship between the Board of Education, county commissioners and the Teachers Association?
As a board president, along with Mr. Stalberg, who are leadership, we, as vice president, Mr. Stalberg and I sit on the Agenda Planning Committee. And I have long been an advocate for joint meetings with the Board of County Commissioners when we embarked on implementing the blueprint. For Maryland's future, it was important to me that we have the opportunity to sit down as two boards to receive information and to learn together. And we had a period of time where we were having regular meetings to discuss matters that were important to both, both boards. And I would like to see us get back to that. Right now, we have just adopted as a board a five-year strategic plan. And I think that it's equally important that we sit down with our Board of County Commissioners and work through that together.
Thank you. This next set of questions we'll be moving on to is under a new subsection, Education Issues of the 21st Century. This first question will be for Mr. Burkett, Mr. Stalberg and Dr. Zentmeyer. The question is, considering national trends, if elected, what would be your policy on banning books and/or the removal of books from school libraries? And, and with Mr. Burkett.
I had to start with me with that one. I think most people in this room would probably be surprised to learn with all the rhetoric that's out there. I am not, not for banning books. I think there's a better answer, a better solution. I do think that there are some problem books in our schools that some parents have issue with. I think a better way of dealing with that is putting them in an area of the library where people can, with parent permission, go to that area and check those books out. We, you know, there, I'm just not necessarily, I'll post on Facebook about burning books. That's crazy, you know? If we ban one book, where does it stop? And so that's my, that's been my view on banning books. All right. So there you go.
Thank you. Mr. Stalberg, same question here.
I think everybody knows my stand on the book banning. Been on social media, but I'm going to tell you this. We talk about parental rights. As I go around the community, nobody talks to me about what is up the issue and tells me I'm wrong about my stand on, on the books in the library. They're not easily broken or not, they're not checked out that much. I've read some of the books and so forth. And, you know, my stand is that high school kids are young adults. They go to college, they're exposed to all kinds of things, they're under the military, some people die, perhaps, and everything. And, you know, my stand is, parents might want to read some of these books, like the Gilt Society, which is very, very interesting. I'll have time to read some of that shit. But you might want to have a conversation with your kids about the time coming back here.
We no longer just accept an outside agency's review of books. So purchasing those books with your dollars has become a very big deal to us and our media specialists. The public library has any offering that you would like, but to rob a child of innocence would not be my choice. I think that we need to have appropriate offerings in the library. I think that we should have strong parental partnerships that check out what is in the library. And we have a process, if indeed a book is offensive, they can go through the process. And we have an entire meeting of all levels through the board to evaluate whether or not that book should stay in the library. We have great media specialists. We have great professional development. And we need to not include books that would keep you awake if you know you can't in our libraries.
Thank you. This next question is, what is the school's role in students' mental health? We'll take that question to Ms. Williams.
What is the school's role?
What is the school's role in students' mental health?
Our role, I, I believe, is to provide the appropriate supports that we are able to with our personnel. And to assist the parents in finding the appropriate resources for their children.
Thank you. Same question to Mr. Bigford.
We play a crucial role. It's one of the issues that actually is front and center when we have our meetings, when we plan our budget and even at the state level, which I don't think we would have found, you know, 10 years ago. Mental health is one of our priorities as, as a board. If you look at our budgets, we're, we put a guidance counselor at every single school. That wasn't the case before. We've expanded school psychologists. And also, one of the issues is that you've got to remember one of the realities of being on a board of education. Any student who walks through our door, no matter wherever they are at, income-wise, mental health-wise, they are officially our student. It is our responsibility to take care of them. And one of the frustrations that we've had is other programs can turn them away. And so I would like to see us expand programs that can help us and not necessarily say no to us.
Thank you. And same question to Ms. Bigfoot. Question is, the school's role, what is the school's role in students' mental health?
I agree that it is a very important role that the school provides every student from pre-K to high school and beyond, that they can reach out also to the parents and guide them in roles and places if the school system can't provide. I know that right now, Fungstown Elementary has been revamped and now is overseeing some mental health issues for students from the elementary grades, which is a plus for the county. I think that the counselors have that ability to also push in and help with the mental health. Everybody's in this together. Our students are number one, should always be. And we take them, like Peter said, when they walk in that door, they're ours and they have to be met no matter what the situations are, no matter what. and they have to be met no matter what the situations are, no matter what happens.
Thank you. This next question is, in this age of single parenting and two paycheck families, how do we increase the role of parents in supporting their child, their child's academic achievement? We'll begin that question here with Mr. Stauffer. You bet. In this age of single parenting and two paycheck families, how do we increase the role of parents in supporting their child's academic achievement?
Well, first of all, I think, uh, we have dedicated staff who, uh, are in contact with parents quite, uh, quite a bit. I know a lot of these, uh, elementary schools, uh, staffs, uh, make home visits, uh, at the beginning of the year. I know, um, my three grandchildren, we go to ramps, they were visited, uh, by staff, came to the house and talked to the kids and so forth, uh, just constant communication. Uh, we have ParentView, uh, we have various, um, things online where they, you know, keep track of, uh, of everything, so that would be my answer.
Thank you. Same question, Mr. Pickler.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually really impressed with how well our staff reaches out to parents. One of the best times of the year, the start of the school, and a few weeks before the start of school, especially in elementary school, when they go out and they meet, um, meet students at their homes. So you can see, that's my teacher, that's gonna be my teacher. A lot of times they come giving books. Um, so those are the relationships that you have to make with parents so that they feel comfortable, um, to engage with the teacher. I think one of the exciting things about the Blueprint legislation is that part of that, uh, schools in high-needs areas, uh, will get a community manager, or basically somebody that their job is to provide some of those supports to families who need it. It takes a lot of the pressure off of teachers who in the past have had to have supply closets and diaper bags and things like that to give the parents. Some of those people will be that now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next question here. With the apparent success of all day pre-K and kindergarten enrollment so far, about seventy-five percent, what should the plan be to enroll the remaining available pre-K and kindergarten students not yet enrolled? And, uh, we'll go to Ms. Pickler for this question. You bet. With the apparent success of all days pre-K and kindergarten enrollment so far, about seventy-five percent, what should the plan be to enroll the remaining available pre-K and kindergarten students that have not yet enrolled?
I think it's important to look at the areas that we have, the, um, enrollment that is not, um, having students enroll with that seventy-five percent. It would be wonderful to have a hundred percent. We also know that working parents depend on private, um, daycares and other facilities, so a lot of students don't come to us in pre-K because of parents' works, um, schedules. But most of the parents do try and get their students in. I do have a grandson who just entered the preschool program at Fountain Rock this year, and I think we need to get out there, um, the community manager that has, um, been placed in most of the elementary schools. That's a good role for them to go out and check around, um, hearsay from other people. You know, maybe there's a neighbor that isn't even aware that the preschool programs are available.
Thank you. Same question to Dr. Zentmeyer.
Fifty-five percent of our kids are, um, pre-K kids are ready for kindergarten, and the highest success that they experience are those that we have prepared in pre-K. Uh, and that's not just in the schools, that's in the communities. I think it's a parental decision whether or not they send their student to pre-K. Some parents are powerlessly equipped to teach their pre-K kids, and I don't think we should take that away from them. Um, but as far as universal pre-K, we were first in the state, uh, to initiate it, and we're fourth in the state with kindergarten readiness. So we're well on our way to preparing students by kindergarten.
Thank you. Uh, same question to Mr. Stauffer. Again, the question being, what should the plan be to enroll the remaining pre-K and kindergarten students that have not yet enrolled in the program so far?
Well, I would agree with Dr. Zentmeyer that, uh, not all parents may wish to, uh, send their kids to, uh, public pre-K program. But, uh, if we make an attempt to do it, word of mouth, uh, advertisement, uh, newspapers, perhaps, uh, TV, uh, various means of communication to let them know that it is available and it is free for everybody.
Thank you. This next set of questions is dealing with specific challenges facing the school district. And, um, we'll begin this first question with Ms. Pickler, which is, we have a diverse student population such as the gifted and talented, those with special needs, those with cultural differences, academically challenged, and those with English as a second language. Describe how the board can provide quality education to all these student populations.
Good question. Very intense question. I, you're, you're really reaching the whole gamut of the whole school system in the county and every school. I know each school is equipped with people in the school itself to handle diversity in elementary school all the way up through high school, um, reaching out to those others, um, communities that need. We need to know their needs before you can assume what they need. I feel that, um, Washington County is really doing a great job of reaching many, many, many needs. Can they do better? Absolutely, but that is a process that takes time and effort and getting the, the information, um, from students and from parents and providing those, and making sure it's equipped in the school system to handle everybody's needs.
Thank you. Same question to Mr. Pickler.
I think you could tell when they asked this question where I went, alright, because this is the stuff we love to talk about. Um, Washington County does a fabulous job of having programs for, uh, multiple needs for students. One of the, one of the statistics that I love is that our English as a second language students, chances are if they have a good year in that program, many of them test out of it and have their proficient English after year, which is incredible. I think one of the challenges that we will continue to work on in the future on the board is making sure that those magnet programs that we've managed to, um, put into, uh, different schools around the county are accessible to students who don't necessarily have the transportation to get to those schools. Um, you know, I think most of us, you know, Williamsport Elementary, Dr. Zentmeyer is very familiar with it, has a fabulous STEM program. If you're, if you're living in Hancock and you should be at that school, we'd love to make that possible, and that's one of the challenges we're working on.
Thank you. Same question to Ms. Williams.
Well, I think we have fabulous programs for addressing the needs of students and, um, as a board, it's our job to be able to assess and realize where, um, funding needs to go, to be able to, uh, sustain the programs that are being effective, uh, where the needs are. We, we rely on staff to let us know where those needs are. We have multiple pathways for students, uh, in Washington County public schools and, uh, limited funds to support those multiple pathways. So it's a lot of prioritizing and a lot of strategizing and looking for, uh, grant funds to be able to help us when we don't have local and state funds to be able to fund the programs that we have.
Thank you. Our next question is, what are your views on virtual learning? How would you ensure all students that desire to go to school virtually regardless of economic status have access to the tools they need to participate in the Academy of Ledged Learning Education or ABLE? Uh, we'll begin with Dr. Zentmeyer.
This is the most exciting program, I can tell you that. ABLE is able to reach everyone. We have a hundred kids waiting to get into a class. We need an English teacher. So if you're a retired English teacher and you want to apply, we need you. Now that we have a center, formerly Antietam Academy, innovated, is there now, we can handle that virtual program. In the event of a national disaster, we have a, every single student has a Chromebook. We have it in place, and for some kids, virtual learning is just their forte. So we need to continue that program. I have to point out that it pays for itself, so we're not asking for extra tax dollars. But the program itself is exciting and allows us to reach every area of the county. The teachers love it. The kids love it. I love it.
Thank you. Same question to Mr. Burkett.
There's really not a whole lot you can say than what, uh, April just said. I know that, um, uh, during COVID, Washington County did an excellent job at getting themselves set up for remote learning. I would offer, I think that should be, uh, limited. Um, I think we saw that because of remote learning, test scores went down, uh, learning, uh, they just, there, it was just a different environment for the kids to learn in. And so I think it should be limited, but, um, I think overall, Washington County has set themselves up to do a good job at, uh, remote learning.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Williams, same, same question.
Well, I think, um, virtual learning should be an option that we offer. Um, I think that, um, coming out of COVID, it was one of the things that, um, we learned from, how to, how to use that, uh, tool wisely and to our best advantage. I don't believe the virtual learning is for every student. I'm very much a proponent of in-person learning. Um, but, you know, it's nice to know that we have that tool, um, available to us for those that, that need it.
Thank you. This next question is for all candidates. It is, what has been the impact of Maryland's Blueprint for Excellence in Education on the Washington County school system? And we'll begin with Dr. Zentmeyer.
Fortunately for us, it has not impacted us as much as it has other counties. We were already ahead with universal pre-K. Um, our quality staff is already in place, and we had already had National Board Certification available to those who wanted to pursue that. And the major problem is funding, and it is becoming a bigger problem. We are so blessed to have such a quality staff, such a wonderful leadership team, and kids who come to school to learn. What we need is money to support those efforts so that every kid has a purpose and a plan.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Williams.
Can I have the question repeated?
You bet. Uh, what has been the impact of Maryland's Blueprint for Excellence in Education on the Washington County school systems?
It's provided us with opportunities. It's provided us with challenges. And, uh, quite honestly, I'm excited about it and have been, and it's one of the reasons why I have, uh, chosen to run for another term is because I want to continue to be a part of seeing it implemented.
Thank you. We'll move on to Mr. Stauffer. Same question.
I don't think it's had, uh, as Dr. Zentmeyer always said, the biggest, it's had a great impact on, on Washington County in terms that, uh, we were already in good shape uh, with many of the things, uh, that are involved in that with the career, uh, and, uh, college and career readiness with the, uh, CTE, uh, situation and so forth. Uh, I think the big thing will be, will be the funding, uh, trying, trying to implement it, and, uh, you know, if you don't implement it properly, uh, the IAB can, AI, Accountability and Implementation Board, the IAB, and then providing twenty-five percent of state funding and so forth. So I think we're in good shape, uh, to implement that.
Thank you. Same question to Ms. Pickler.
I know I was involved in a lot of the before Blueprint, um, issues, and now that the Blueprint has come forward, and it was started during COVID, and we, Washington County was already ahead of the game, where there's some counties that are lagging behind. I feel that we have a clear path of where we're projecting to go. Lot of those Blueprint columns can be checked off. Are they a hundred percent there? No, but we are really close to the top. Um, preschool is rocking and rolling. We've got qualified teachers. We're maintaining excellent teachers. We are looking for the funding to make all this come together, and that is one of the biggest issues that's behind, um, being successful with the Blueprint. The funding's gotta be there, and we've got to work harder for it so that we can be successful.
Thank you, Mr. Burkett.
It's like ask the same question and get a different, uh, there's a saying, and it just escaped me. But anyway, um, I think it's still kind of early to, to say how it's gonna impact. I agree with, with these guys that, um, uh, we're in good shape right now, but I also agree that funding is gonna be an issue. And, uh, we're already seeing state, uh, raising taxes, fees, uh, to help pay for some of this program. Where's that money gonna come from?
Thank you. Ms. Pickler.
I think one of the things I'm excited about with Blueprint is, if you look at the formulas, and I'm looking at Jeff Prue back there, we are looking at the formulas will bring more money into Washington County, and I think one of the things we've proven as a school system is that we spend your money well. We are not one of the highest-funded school systems in the state of Maryland, and yet we've been able to do universal pre-K. I mean, we've been able to do the highest starting salary for teachers. We make commitments. And so more money is coming to us. There are challenges. We'll look to an applet of how we figure that out, but I do know that money will be well-spent.
Thank you. Okay, now the final stretch here. This is an opportunity here for you all to take a moment and explain to those who are watching in person and on Facebook today. Um, let us know why they should vote for you. Um, we'll go ahead and start at the end of the table again. Uh, Dr. Zentmeyer, you have ninety seconds. Each candidate will have ninety seconds for closing comments here.
I missed your last four words. Why, what?
Why should we vote for you?
Well, please do. I have for safe schools, highly qualified, well-paid staff, schools that offer a plan for kids and a purpose when they leave us. And I hope that the parental partnerships and the wise spending are also in the forefront of what I believe. We're doing a great job, guys. We really are. We just need to continue and to address those problems that arise. And I think we have one employee, and that employee is a good employee, and his team is excellent. We need to continue with that excellence.
Thank you. And we're just gonna go ahead and work our way down the table here, so each of you have ninety seconds.
Well, I would like to continue to work on behalf of all students in Washington County. Um, I think this board has done great things in building the school system ahead. I think we have, um, many accomplishments that we can be proud of. We've addressed challenges. We still have challenges before us, and I, I would like to continue to be a part of that. As I said, I would like to see the Blueprint, um, fully implemented and in the best possible way to be of benefit to all students in Washington County, and I'm very excited about our strategic plan. So I would like to keep our school system on the path of excellence. I ask humbly for your vote, so I can continue.
Thank you.
Well, ever since ninth grade of high school, I've wanted to be a teacher, a social studies teacher. And I, uh, achieved that, and I was in the system for forty-two years. I've spent the last eight years, uh, serving on the school board as vice president. I believe that I bring honesty and transparency to the board. I work hard. I prepare for meetings. I truly accept and practice the non-partisanship role of this board. That is very important. And as I said earlier, I have three great grandchildren in the system. But I want this system to stay prepared. I can remember when I was an assistant wrestling coach at Williamsport High School, we had people move into the system who were moving into the GM plant, which was opening in West Virginia. And one evening, the parents used to come to practice early and watch. And I got to speaking to the one gentleman, he was in management at that plant. And I asked him why he lived in Washington County when the plant served in Martinsburg. He said, we checked out the school system. This was in the nineteen eighties. And so I want to maintain the excellence that Washington County has had. I only ask for your vote. I would like to serve a third term and keep doing the best for Washington County.
Thank you.
I bring so much to the table as being a newbie for the board. I bring a lot of experience, as I stated before. I have been in the system all my life. I student taught here and I wanted to teach here. And I know this county. It's the backbone that I've grown up with. I've raised my daughter here and now my three grandkids. This is where I want to be. This is where I feel the most need that I can do. I'm in contact with numerous colleagues from my experience being in school system. I hear every day something new. I'm always up for a challenge. And I feel this is a good challenge that I can provide the best for Washington County Public Schools. I am committed. Once I have something that has been asked of me or that I step forward, I can see it through and through and through and through and I will complete it. I also am invested because of my grandkids. My only daughter was very successful going through school. My family went through here. My three grandkids are coming up and they are my pride and joy. And I know this county all my life, all my life. And I can give to this county everything that it's given to me. I want to give it back and I want to give it back tenfold because my grandkids deserve it.
Thank you.
I would just say that all my life, from the time I was thirteen, when I started serving with the local Red Cross as a youth Red Cross volunteer, my life has always been about service to others. I tried to join the military. It didn't work out. I got put out very early on because of a disability that showed up after I got enlisted. Was very disappointed in that. And so I started looking for other avenues that I could serve. And so I've served in my church. I served in, I probably employed thousands of people over the twenty-five years that I was in business. You know, you talk about experience. We do have a lot of teachers on the board and I respect them very much for what they do, especially after spending some time in classrooms. Thank you all. But, because it's not an easy job. Our teachers are due a lot of respect. But everybody started on this board as a newbie. And so I'm just asking, hey, you know, maybe it's time for a new face. I do have experience in other areas that offer me benefit when it comes to finances. And so I would humbly ask for your vote.
I think one of the reasons to vote for all of us is that we're willing to run. Because if you've seen what school boards have been going through across the nation, many people say, are you crazy? But actually, I say it's actually not that bad and it's even rewarding. Because at the end of the day, you get to work on real problems in communities that I grew up in, we all grew up in. One of the things I hate is when people say, oh, they make a mistake, you know, and they say, oh, there's my Washington County education. That drives me crazy because I feel like we had great Washington. I grew up in Washington County. I feel like I had a great education here and I think we're seeing that too continue. So that's one of the reasons why I hope to continue serving on the board. Like Charlie, I was a newbie. I remember coming in, it's like a fire hose of new information, learning about education policy and what you can and can't do on the board. I've learned a ton in these seven years. So I think I'm well prepared for the next phase, which is really seriously implementing this Blueprint legislation that's coming into the county. So I too would humbly ask for your vote.
Thank you. Before I hand the time over to Dr. Ball, I just want to thank each of you for your time this morning and being here and most importantly, for being members of our community willing to serve and put your hat in the ring. Thank you for those of you who are seeking for the first time or reelection. Thank you so much for your service, Dr.
Thank you. Let's give Soren a round of applause for moderating the Corporation of Learning. Now, as we've heard, educating our citizens at work tomorrow is not easy. It's critical that we have leadership in place that can guide us on this journey. And I just want to emphasize the importance of education to the business community. To survive and Dr. Flaubert serve on the board of directors, that's how we think it is for the education and for business communities. We do want to thank the candidates, as Soren said, for putting your hat in the ring and helping us guide us on this journey. And public service is not easy and I believe, as I sat on a commission, looking at all the pay from all of our elected officials in the county and for the amount of time the board of education members put in, it's critical that we have the right votes. So thank you for being willing to put your hat in the ring and doing that. Also, I want to thank each of you for being here and for those of you who are watching us on Facebook. Thank you. We have, it's a little early, so we have between nine and a meter start. If you want to talk to the candidates, I'm sure we'll stick around a bit. Good reminder, about nine o'clock, there are the meters. Those are checking. And if you've been watching about the parking situation in the city, they're looking for more funding. So just forewarn, just forewarn. Thank you all for being here this morning. Drive safely.